Okay, I was waiting, I'm a couple of minutes late and pounding the gavel because I was waiting for us to get a quorum here, and we now have that, so we will proceed legally. Call the meeting to order for the City Council meeting on Monday, May 6, 2024. And I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we make our way midway through the 2024 year, we are ever so mindful of the world around us and all the challenges and disagreements and issues that are being faced by our world at large. But as we sit in Batavia, we are, I think, also ever mindful of the many good things that are happening within our community, and we are thankful for all the blessings that have been showered upon our community, and most importantly, all the good people who make up our community and who can debate and object to each other. But at the end of the day, they all come to the agreement that we are all here to live in a world that is understanding and helpful and devoted to our community in many, many ways. And so all that, I want to make a special moment of thanks for that. Tonight, as we always want to do, we want to remember those from our community who are serving in foreign soils in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be shined upon those men and women and all those serving with them from our country. Tonight, we ask for direction and vision and understanding by the members of the City Council as they act on the items of business before us, knowing that each one in their own heart and mind is here to do what they feel is in the very best interest of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings, amen.
Alderman Soffa with you, ladies and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, ask for a roll call, please.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Chanzet. Chanzet. Wolf.
Here.
Soffa.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Yor.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Let the record reflect that we have 12 of the 14 elected members of the City Council present and accounting for us, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Item four is our meeting reminder that I would ask if you're going to address us tonight that you please come forward and use the podium with the microphone and that you speak directly into the microphone, because this is all being photographed and televised on BATV, and if you don't speak into that microphone, your voice probably doesn't get on the TV channel. So we ask that you do that as part of your, anything you're going to say. Moving then to item five, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Does anybody in the council have anything they want to make a motion or issue about? Is there none? We'll move then to the item six, which is the consent agenda. Alderman Beck, do you have that?
I do. Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the Committee of the Whole minutes for March 26th and April 15th, 2024; the tree commission minutes for April 5th and June 28th, 2023; January and February 2024 City Council financial reports; and for approval, the April 26th, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,018,257. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $7,681,726 and 20 cents; the City Council minutes for January 16th, March 18th, April 1st, and April 15th, 2024; Resolution 2024-68-R authorizing the vehicle purchase for Community Development, Community and Economic Development Department for an amount not to exceed $50,000; Resolution 2024-65-R authorizing a contract with Era Valdivia Contractors, Inc. for the 2024 Bridge Preventative Maintenance Project for an amount not to exceed $73,300; Resolution 2024-70-R approving telecommunications franchise agreement with Vaina Com Communications; Ordinance 2024-38 annexing 01 South 700, 01 South 881, and 01 South 915 Deer Path Road; Resolution 2024-71-R authorizing, authorization to execute a contract with Swallow Construction for Carriage Crest; Ordinance 2024-28 amending the 2024 wage and salaries for non-collectively bargained employees; approval, and for approval, the Class G liquor license for the Batavia Park District's uncorked wine tasting event June 8th, 2024. Your Honor, I would move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Beck, second by Alderman Lehman. Any discussion, questions on the consent agenda as presented? No? Kirk call the roll.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Wolf.
Aye.
Soffa.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Yor.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Motion approved, 12. Consent agenda is approved by a vote of 12, yes, two absent. All right, moving to item seven, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Does anybody this evening wish to address the City Council for something that's not on the agenda? All right. Next item then is eight, the bid opening for sale of land.
This is a bid opening for the property at the northeast corner of Main Street and Deer Path Road. We had published a notice to solicit bids. It was advertised in the Daily Herald three times in April. The bid deadline was May 1st at 12:01, and at that time, we received one bid. It was a sealed bid. I'll open it at this time. It is a bid from Leo Brown Development Company in the amount of $10, which is the minimum amount in the bid. I will put this on an agenda for consideration for the City Council on whether or not to approve of the sale of land for that bid.
Any questions of the Community Development Director this moment? It will be on the next committee meeting, right?
Put on the next committee of the whole, correct. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to item nine, which is proclamation for Public Works Week, May 19th through 25th. Alderman Beck.
Your Honor, a proclamation: Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets, waters, water, wastewater, and electric; whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends upon these facilities and services; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public work officials; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public work departments is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of this, of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore I, Jeffrey D. Shilke, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby reclaim the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024 as National Public Works Week in the City of Batavia, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life on this sixth day of May, 2024. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shilke. And I would move we approve the proclamation as read.
I have a motion and second for the approval of National Public Works Week, May 19th to 25th. Any discussion? We have Gary Holm in the audience. Do you want to make any comments? Gary is our Public Works Director, for those of you in the audience who may not know who he is.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, my only comment tonight would be just to extend a thank you to all the members of the Public Works Department who work hard every single day, and especially to their families who, you know, at 2 o'clock in the morning, their loved one goes off to work to fight or do an issue here in the city. So, thank you to them and their families. Thank you all.
We'll have a copy of the resolution for you here pretty quick after we pass it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Kirk call the roll then on the proclamation for National Public Works Week.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Wolf.
Aye.
Soffa.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Yor.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger. Motion approved, 12, yes, two zero, two absent.
Good. Moving then to item 10, which is National Safe Boating Week for May 18th to 24th. Alderman Beck.
It's a proclamation: For over 100 million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity. From coast to coast and everywhere in between, people are taking to the water and enjoying time together, boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing. During National Safe Boating Week, the U.S. Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe boating partners encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. Whereas, on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., 75% of these fatalities caused by drowning; and whereas, the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors; and whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would have been alive today had they worn their life jackets. Now therefore I, Jeffrey D. Shilke, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim the week of May 18 through 24, 2024, as National Safe Boating Week, and encourage all residents of Batavia to practice safe boating habits and wear a life jacket at all times while boating. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shilke, Mayor of Batavia. I will move we approve the proclamation as read.
I have a motion and second for the approval of the Safe Boating Week proclamation. Any discussion?
I think it's extremely important that we talk about this every year, especially with the dam that we have in town and the Fox, that people really need to be aware of the realities of what that river is like at different times of year, and you really have to pay attention to it. So I think it's good that we talk about this every year.
I was just going to say, do we have a link to a resource of good guidelines for safe boating, especially with, you know, having a little head dam like that here in town?
You could either go to the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary website or National Safe Boating Week website.
Fantastic.
Either of those would be a good resource. The Coast Guard Auxiliary has a lot of resources available. We do a lot of training, we do vessel examinations, and we're very focused on protecting our boaters and trying to keep them alive.
So we have, your rank or?
I'm an immediate past flotilla commander.
Okay, we have immediate past flotilla commander from the U.S. Coast Guard.
Auxiliary.
Auxiliary, here tonight to accept this, and he is Mike Janisak.
Yep.
And so we thank you for coming by, and I'm honored to present to you an official copy, signed, sealed, and approved by the City Council, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
You want to make any comments about safe boating?
Yes, I do. Some of the most important factors of safe boating are to get trained, to get, take a safety class, to wear a life jacket, and to boat sober. Those are some of the biggest killers. Wearing your life jacket, not just having it on board the boat, is probably the number one thing that can make the difference between having a really good day on the water and a really tragic day on the water. So those are the things that we strongly encourage, and again, the Coast Guard Auxiliary does offer safe boater training classes, we offer vessel inspections, and we're there to help out in any way we can to provide people with a better safe boating experience. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Best wishes in the future. All right, item number 11 is presentation by the Batavia Public Arts Initiative Proposal for Murals on the East Side of the Batavia Government Center. Alderman Beck, you're going to be one of the spokes.
Yeah, I'm sorry you're hearing from me a lot tonight.
Thank you for doing it. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. I'm Abby Beck. I sit over there. But tonight, I am representing the Conservation Foundation. My coworker, Jessica Minow, is the Kane and Kendall County Program Director, and she couldn't be here tonight, so I said, don't worry about it, I can fill in, I'm going to be here anyway. And we are here to present an idea, a continuation of a program of ours called Art of the Fox. So our mission at the Conservation Foundation is to preserve, to improve the health of our communities by preserving open space, by improving our rivers and streams, and by inspiring people to be good stewards of our natural resources. And one of the programs that we do that through is called Art of the Fox. The mission of Art of the Fox is to connect communities to the beauty, diversity, and importance of the Fox River through art. So our first round of Art of the Fox involved commissioning a local artist named Joel Sheasley to do over 70 different plein air paintings through Four Seasons over multiple different years, all up and down the Fox, and it was compiled into this beautiful book in multiple prints. And this second round of Art of the Fox is going to focus on public art. So the, our hope is that over the next couple of years, we will have multiple nature-inspired art installations up and down the Fox River Valley. And the objectives of our program is to be, that the projects must be public and accessible to all, celebrate local diverse voices, connect people to place and nature, contribute to a community's beautification efforts, create an inspirational educational focus point with the potential to attract visitors, and provide the community with something beautiful that fosters social interactions and creates memorable experiences. As conservation people, we don't necessarily know art very well, so a public art campaign was something a little daunting to us. So I mentioned to Jessica, the program director, I was like, well, I know some people in Batavia that are starting this public art initiative, and selfishly, I would really like to see more public art in Batavia. So I just made the introduction to the two groups and started a conversation about maybe having Batavia be the first Art of the Fox public art installation. And so we're here tonight to kind of get the council's blessing on the proposed project. Luckily, the partnership has gone very well, and the conversations have been going really well between Bonnie and her team, so I'll let her actually talk about the art portion, the art idea behind this project.
Hello, I am Bonnie Baumgartner. I am one of the co-chairs for the Batavia Public Art Initiative. I also serve on Water Street Studios Board of Directors. I am their secretary and help with marketing, and I'm also spearheading this project with Sabrina, back here Sabrina. And so when Abby and Jessica reached out to us, we kind of walked around town, canvassed a lot of areas, and we really felt like for the objective of connecting people with nature and space. One of the prime locations was right here on the east side of the City Hall building. We love the idea as really having this be like our pilot. The last time that we brought a mural to Batavia, it was a project that was funded by a business that was very generous and supportive, but we didn't put out a call for art and get to really pick local artists ourselves. And we see this as being a project where we can select several artists to fill these locations. These are the framed kind of window spaces along the east side there that run along the Fox. They're about seven foot tall by five foot four. We have a goal of doing eight murals. Each one would showcase a different artist and a unique design that is incorporating natural elements. The total number will be determined by how successful our fundraising goes, but with a goal of eight, it'd be really lovely to do all 10, that center bank there. The other beauty of this project is we have an ability to expand over time, since there are so many of these little windows around the building. It'd be really great to see more artwork featured. This project, if we get your blessing today, that's what we're hoping to get, a blessing to pursue it, we will put out a call for portfolios and designs. Once we get a, once we close that submission, the jury comprised of several working artists, professional artists, as well as Water Street Studios Board members and other creative individuals from the community, will jury the selections and then come back to present those to council and the HPC. Then we'll have our installation and then hopefully do a nice reveal party. So yeah, that's what we're here for today. Does anyone have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Laura?
Mayor, if I'm not, if I'm not incorrect, didn't Jim Hagaman years ago paint bird pictures that were in this window? And so it's something that is very similar to something that was done very successfully in the past.
I think it's a lovely idea. I mean, there's so many people who walk up and down the path there, and just to have, you know, some more beauty on that side, I think is a great idea. I think you said you're looking at different artists for each window, is that what I heard? Okay.
It'll basically be a call that'll go out across, we'll do press releases on our websites and push it out to our art partners from different agencies and make sure we get a nice group of qualified art artists to submit, so.
What fundraising plans do you have for this project?
Abby, do you want to speak on that?
The Conservation Foundation has a budget to do about half of them, four, right? Is that the way the math, was it? We're coming with a budget, and then we will fundraise for the balance, so we have enough to get it started.
Alderman, Serone?
How do you know what to budget?
Experts that know how to budget art, which is not our forte.
We've estimated, okay, approximately $600 would be paid directly to the artists. There will be other costs associated with priming, prepping, and doing a graffiti cover on each window space, so we're going to shoot for a goal around $800 per space.
You know, I would just offer up, in the last three weeks, I've spent a lot of time down here, specifically on weekends, on Saturdays and Sundays, and the amount of out of, I'll call it out of town traffic that comes in here because they're here to see something else going on in downtown, this is like a big mystery area that people, and they come up and they say, I just can't believe what I've seen here, what a beautiful area this is. And I get some of the opinion, this will just continue to enhance it even that much more, and, you know, we'll have people making a lot of more positive comments about it. So it really does kind of play into what's going on here right now in Batavia, something that we should be very proud of, given that, you know, what we started with here was a much different picture than the picture that you walk around with today. Let me just end it by saying that.
I think we need any motions, but I think you're getting a yes.
Thank you. All right, the next is item 12, the Batavia Chamber of Commerce.
All right, evening. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. First of all, I want to welcome the businesses that joined the Batavia Chamber this past month, Senior Services Associates, Threshold Home Inspection Services, Garage Experts of King County, The Funding Project, Bar &amp; Board, Drone Threads, Sports Clips, TBK Bank, Ash Equipment, and Hollywood Casinos. We know why they're joining. I think we have a good idea why. We have a very busy May coming up with the Chamber, making sure that businesses are getting the support they need. Please mark your calendars and join us for our upcoming events. I want to highlight, first of all, the Volunteer Fair, which will be this Thursday at the Batavia Public Library from 2 until 7:00 p.m. We will have 36 local not-for-profit organizations represented to help with the tri-city residents who want to find ways to get involved and serve the community using their passion and skills. This Volunteer Fair is for all ages, elementary students to retired individuals. If you or your friends and your family are looking for ways to help and get involved, please join us at the Volunteer Fair from 2 to 7:00. On Tuesday, May 7th, we have a ribbon cutting ceremony coming up for Bloom &amp; Learn at 336 McKee Street at 4:00 p.m. We have our morning networking, coffee and commerce at Oscar Swan Wednesday, May 8th at 8:00 a.m. We have a ribbon cutting ceremony to kick off the new boardwalk shop season on Friday, May 10th. We're doing, cutting the ribbon at 9:30, they open at 10:00. On Friday, May 10th, in the afternoon, or mid-morning, we have a multi-chamber networking at Eagle Brook Country Club at 11:30. Wednesday, May 15th, Supercharge Your Grant Writing with an AI seminar for not-for-profits to figure out how to make the most of grant applications using AI. Wednesday, May 17th, we have our networking at Geneva Winery on River Street. We will be spotlighting Literacy Volunteers' Fox Valley. We have another ribbon cutting on Thursday, May 16th for Zen Loft Collective that's above Cato on Wilson and River. Thursday, May 21st, at 11:30, we have Master in Canva for Small Business Marketing Success webinar. May 23rd, we have our drop-in out to lunch with the Chamber staff at Thorabella's, no reservation needed, just come join us at noon. On Friday, May 31st, at 3:00 p.m., we have a ribbon cutting at Rookie's All-American Pub and Grill. And then I want to let you know that our golf outing is open for registration. That will be Friday, June 7th at 7:30. That's always just such a fun day. With spring here, we are seeing the Batavia flag sales take off. We know that the Batavia flag brings people together and creates a sense of unity. We have garden, garden flag size and 3x5 flags available to everyone to purchase through the Batavia Chambers website. Inspired Celebration was an exceptional event at Revelry 675 on April 25th. Mark your calendars, we've reserved for next year at Revelry again on April, I think it's April 24th, 2025. I want to thank all of you who came that evening. It was a very wonderful evening to celebrate Dave and Marge Brown, our Citizens of the Year, and the OLE Award-winning businesses that have invested in our community. We've been releasing the OLE videos that were recorded to celebrate on our Facebook page, so if you haven't seen them, go there, they're wonderful, highlighting the local businesses that were given awards. We showed our gratitude to Batavia RSVP as the Spirit of the Batavia Award winner. And now I'd like to show you a short video about the Community Impact Award winners for the Batavia Flag Day Monument.
The Flag Day Monument project has been near and dear to the hearts of many people in Batavia. This seven-year fundraising project to build a national caliber monument dedicated to Dr. Bernard Segrand, a Batavia dentist who is considered by many in our country to be the father of Flag Day. This monument, designed by architect Steve Vassillion, honors veterans, active military, first responders, Congressional Medal of Honor recipients, and all patriotic citizens nationwide. It teaches visitors about the history of the American flag through all its changes and the many conflicts and cultural eras which have defined it. The Fox Valley Patriotic Organization, under the great leadership of Austin Dempsey, led the fundraising efforts to make this beautiful addition to Batavia's riverfront possible. A huge thanks to all who donated or bought a brick to bring this monument to completion. And there's still time. If you'd like to go to flagdaymonument.com, you could buy a brick or donate at any time.
Many of you may recognize our narrator's voice in that video. Linda Shilke and Austin Dempsey accepted the award that evening. Austin did a fantastic speech acceptance to make us feel very proud of the Flag Day Monument. Before I introduce my guest, I want to mention that Flag Day is Friday, June 14th. Batavia is celebrating Flag Day weekend, the 14th, 15th, and 16th. The Flag Day Committee is working with downtown businesses to make it fun and get everybody involved. Currently, Pale Joey's, Windmill Grill, Haley Bee's Bakery, and Surdy Shelter are participating. Mention the Flag Day promotion, and a portion of sales will go towards the Flag Day Monument that weekend. All downtown businesses are invited and encouraged to participate, so if businesses cannot give a discount, hopefully they will be able to participate by selling patriotic items or decorating their businesses in red, white, and blue to create excitement for the Flag Day celebration. If your business is interested, please contact me and I'll connect you with the Flag Day Committee. Does anybody have any questions before I introduce my guest? Okay, great. I want to introduce Marty Callahan. I think many of you may already know him. He's got, he's a member of the Fox Valley Patriotic Organization, and he has a lot to share with us.
Marty's here. Hold your wall.
Hold your wallets. Hello, everybody. As Margaret had said, we have a lot of upcoming events at the Flag Day Monument that are going to be integrated into making sure that we're bringing people into the downtown. On June 14th, Mrs. Shelkey is going to be leading the Flag Day festivities. And then on the 15th, we'll be having a Liberty Tree dedication partnering with the city, replacing one of the trees that was removed during the initial construction. But if you want to walk around downtown with your latest wear, we partnered with Fully Promoted up in St. Charles. They do a lot of promotional gear and clothing. You can purchase our clothing and other items on flagdaymonument.com. If you go to our online store, you'll be able to purchase those things that you've always been able to purchase, the bricks, the coins, the pins. But now there's a link that takes you directly to our new store for all of the items that we have. And we have specifically chosen the summer/fall kind of lineup. They rotate items in that are going to be selling so that we don't have to buy merchandise and store it in inventory. Once you order it, you'll be able to have it made up in St. Charles, and they can either ship it to you or you can go pick it up. Also, if you wanted to go see what the clothing is, see the feel, the fit, you can go ahead and do that, just like you're going to a store. And with some of the items that we chose were so that you can go and enjoy cocktails in the park or the summer music series that the park puts on with coolers and blankets, seat backs, Abby. Reusable bags. Does anybody have any questions?
Keep up the great work.
There's going to be a lot of people that are coming in, hopefully, as we continue to reach out and bring these in. We had our first tour that the shirts came in just in time with the Homestead. And there were a lot of people, to your point, that are now moving into the Homestead and some of the other residential facilities that have said, I didn't even know this was here, because they're not from Batavia. So they're moving here, saying, wow, we're learning all of these things. And that was what the group came away. They were just fascinated. And then they left here and went over to the creamery. But there's going to be more opportunities. I'm going to the state VFW convention, first part of June, to talk to all the VFWs, to make sure that they're aware of our organization and of the monument. And if you have any groups that you belong to, civic organizations, you can always get together with that group and schedule and contact us through info@flagdaymonument.com and set up a tour.
You know, I would just offer up that certainly to kind of fine-tune any future tours of the flag thing, I was going to suggest that we probably need to include this room in any tours, given the fact that we now know that this was the room that Dunbar Capital had this company in here called DK Aerospace. And they made several components for the early space industry. And in the book that was written first on the moon, there's a clause in there where they tell about that the, what they described as the flexible fuel line that was in the rocket that landed on the moon was made in this room.
And I sat here long enough to know that story, that it is incorporated into the tour.
Okay, well, good. I mean, that really catches people's interest when you can say, well, we got the flag monument out here, but right here, something, one of the most significant events in the history of the American flag was created in this room right here. So it's history working together, I guess.
So if you want to come and call me for the 45-minute tour, that's fine. If you want the six-hour tour, that's going to cost you $100.
The case in the back of the room there is being put there to put together a presentation about that event.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Anything else? You're done, Margaret?
I am done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving to 13, which is approval, motion to waive formal bidding for Resolution 2024-069-R. Who's got this one?
At the comm, I can take it, Your Honor. I'll make the motion that we waive formal bidding for Resolution 2024-69-R.
Motion in second for the waiving of the formal bidding for Resolution 2024-069-R. Any discussion?
Yeah, maybe if somebody didn't know what this was about, we have a conduit installation that'll be reimbursed that we went out and didn't go out for formal bidding on. That's why we're waiving it on this.
Nothing wrong. It was just kind of a misplacement of some documents, I think.
No, I think we do this quite often when we have ones that are being reimbursed, correct, Gary? That's the way we handle this, is we go out and get it done, and then whoever it's being done for repays us for it.
Any other discussion? Motion in second. Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Sharone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza? Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanzet. Motion carries 13, one absent.
Good. All right. Then item 14, which is Resolution 2024-069-R, approving contract with IHC for the 12KV conduit installation. You got this one again?
And that would be the installation of the conduit within this contract. Any questions? I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2024-69-R, approving contract with IHC for 12KV conduit installation.
Second.
By Wolf, second by Sofa, for the approval of Resolution 2024-069-R for the conduit installation. Any discussion further? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Sharone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanzet. Motion carries 13, one absent.
Motion's approved. All right. Moving to item 15, which is the Ashton Ridge subdivision, 1,110 McKee Street and 301 North Vanortrick Avenue. Scott Dunning?
Lou. This is the item that was approved by Committee of Hall, 12 to 2 vote. These are the ordinances that would adopt and approve of the Ashton Ridge subdivision at the location. There are two minor revisions that were made to the ordinances. One was relating to the wraparound portraits, just to clarify that with the changes, they were not going to have the wraparound portraits because of that. And then the other was a clarification on the school district property and disposition of what was how that has to be built initially. So those are really the only changes since Committee of Hall that's been here. The applicant is here, in case you have any questions or were you going to?
With that change on the school district side, that still gives the ability for the school district to have in and out instead of just one in and out.
Correct.
So two entrances.
It would be, well, I think what their plan is to have that be the bus location, and then the parent and other car drop-off would be on the other side.
But more than one access point to the property?
Correct. Yes.
The way it is today?
Right. It would be a second access point then, yes.
Okay. I want to make sure that was clear, so everybody knew that.
Do we want to then go to item A? Is that what we wanted to do here?
I don't know if anybody from the public has the comment or not.
I think we have to vote on each one of these separately.
Correct. Yes.
So item A is ordinance 2024-035, amending the land use map of the comprehensive plan. All moved.
Second.
Move by Wolf, second by Sofa, for the approval of ordinance 2024-035. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
No.
Yor?
Aye.
Sharone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Millet? I'm sorry. Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanzet. Motion approved. 10?
11 to 2.
11 to 2.
11 to 2, I believe. Should be 11 to 2.
11 to 2.
11 to 2, okay.
All right. Moving then to B, which is ordinance 2024-036, amending the official zoning map to rezone the property to R1H and R3 District and to add a planned development overlay district to the official zoning map. All moved.
Second.
Move by Wolf, second by Sofa, for the approval of ordinance 2024-036. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
No.
Yor?
Aye.
Sharone?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Peeper?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Vogelsinger?
Aye.
I'm sorry about that. Chanzet. Okay. Motion approved, 11 to 2.
All right. Moving then to item C, which is Resolution 2024-066-R, approving the preliminary plat of the Ashton Ridge subdivision. Alman.
All moved. Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sofa, for the approval of Resolution 2024-066, approval of the preliminary plat. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
No.
Yor?
Aye.
Sharone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanzet. Motion approved, 11 to 2.
And then finally, item D, which is Resolution 2024-067-R, Notice of Decision for Tree Preservation. Alman.
All moved. Second.
Move by Wolf, second by Sofa, for the approval of Resolution 2024-067-R, Notice of Tree, Decision of Tree Preservation. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Sharone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanzet. Motion approved.
11 to 2?
13.
Oh, 13?
13 to 0.
13 to 0.
Thank you.
All right. Does Pulte want to say anything?
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's effort on this, hard work. Matt Brody with Pulte Home Company. We are going to get to work pretty quick here to get final documents submitted into the city so we can close on the property in August and pave before the end of the year, or the end of the pave date. So we're getting to work pretty quick. So thanks for your help.
Thank you. Welcome to Batavia a second time. All right. Moving to item 16, which is Resolution 2024-073-R, authorizing the execution of amended notice of intent to award for the 2023 and 2024 lead and galvanized steel water service line replacement project to Five Star Energy Services. Who's got this one?
Guess you can say me. I was just going to turn it over to Gary, but Jeremy's not here. So this is one of those steps in the Illinois Low Interest Loan Program process that we have to do. It's a notice of intent to award, not the actual notice of award. And you already did this once, but because we now have secured additional funds from the state, I think we covered that with you a few weeks back. The first time you did it, it was roughly around $2 million, and now we're getting roughly around $4 million worth of funds. You now have to go through the step again of another notice of intent to award, and it is literally an administrative step in the process.
And again, this puts us way out in front of the majority of the state in trying to get all these lead services.
Jeremy Barkai has got us so far out in front, we keep getting calls from people asking how we're doing it. So yes.
However it works, it works.
I just want to offer that I've had a number of inquiries recently, not negative, but you know, more like, what's going on here? Why does every place I go and around downtown Batavia, somebody's digging a hole in the ground? And I have kind of a standard reply. I said, well, you know, each project may have some individual, unique amenities or differences, but at the end of the day, the city council wanted to get ahead of this lead pipe thing that is becoming more and more a predominant issue with a lot of people. And there is apparently proof that it is, it can have a detrimental impact on health. And you have to appreciate that the Batavia history story is that in January of 1893, on a cold January day, the East Side School caught on fire with all the kids in the building. And they got all the kids, it was a three-story building, and they got every one of those kids out of that building. And the kids all used to joke, they stood there without their coats on and watched the school burn down because City Batavia at that point did not have a public water system in the ground. And the river was frozen, and the, what fire department we had had buckets and some hose, but the hose wouldn't reach to the river from Old Louise White School's location. So they sat there and watched it. So after that experience, people in Batavia went to referendum and voted to put in a public water system for the first time. So a lot of this pipe that's coming out of the ground that you see all this work going on, it's probably some, many of it's the early 1890s. It's when it was put into the ground. I mean, this is really old stuff. And as they take it out, I've stood there a couple times and watched the pipe come out of the ground and looked inside, and it's all kinds of corrosion and little bits of cracks in it and everything else. So you have to appreciate your water was running through that before you drank it. So I think we're, of all the things this council's ever done, this probably is one of the more important and impressive things. And from, if nothing else, just a pure environmental enhancement for this town to have, for future generations to be able to use a water system that's not going to have that relationship to it.[1675.08]
then also from the Illinois Department of Public Health, is evaluating when we can take the signs down that are along the creek. But given the fact that the federal EPA just came out with a new standard for drinking water and PFAS, the IEPA and IDPH are now looking at what their levels are, even for, I'll call it recreational use of the water. So if somebody was to be trudging through the, through the creek, they're looking at whether they should make adjustments to their previously approved levels, given the new standards that have been issued by the federal EPA. Let's see, we are in the fire department. As you know, you approved the consultant to work on a staffing report for them, and so we have begun gathering data and reports for the study. Also, the fire department is completing background checks for the firefighter eligibility list. In Public Works, you'll notice if you head over to North River Street that the street furniture, the planters and the benches have been moved back to their original design locations. And then on the 9th, this Thursday, we have a meeting with Sidecar about their 2024 events that they would like to host on the street. Based on the contractor's latest schedule, the construction activities unfortunately will still be ongoing at the intersection of Union and Water Street when the quarry opens for the season, but we have provided notice to the Park District about this. And also, we are going to, because the Illinois Department of Transportation still has not issued a permit for the road diet at this point, we are making arrangements with Andy Frain, as we did last year, for there to be a crossing guard during the hours that, that the quarry is open for business. The contractor for Carriage Crest has ordered materials and supplies and is on schedule to commence the construction in that area by June. And then also, our street supervisors attended American Public Works Association's National Show, I'm sorry, National Snow Conference to learn about the latest technologies in winter operations. Employee education is one of those requirements for the city as our ongoing SALT Smart certification process. If you remember, this is one of the strategies that is part of our strategic plan. That's all I have, unless somebody has any questions for me? Yes, Alderman Lehman?
Are we doing anything to put some pressure on iDOT about Route 31?
As a matter of fact, the mayor signed today a follow-up letter. This is his second letter to the Secretary of Transportation. The Area 1 office has told us that the decision about our permit is in Springfield now. So hopefully, it's part of Mr. Ossman's staff that he will be able to put pressure on to make a decision and hopefully get that permit issued.
Would it be possible to reach out to some of our representatives again and see?
Yes, I have plans to share the mayor's letter with all of our representatives who, in the previous round after the mayor sent the letter, each one of them contacted the agency, and the agency just came back to say, "We're working on it as fast as we can. We're just so short-staffed." So, but now that it is out of Area 1 and in Springfield, I am hoping that we are near to the point of being able to receive the permit.
And then how quickly after we receive the permit will we see operational change on Route 31?
Gary can respond there.
Yeah, we would have to go out through the bidding process, though. So we haven't even bid the project yet. So your bidding is going to take a minimum of three weeks, usually about a month after that between the time you award the contract and contract starts. So you are still a couple of months away even after you get a permit.
The good part about this project is that it doesn't require any real construction. It is simply removing of the stripes and putting different stripes down. So Gary, I don't know if you have an estimate of whether that's a four-week or a six-week process once the ball gets rolling.
Yeah, literally only probably a couple of weeks, exactly.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, do we have other business? Okay, well, then the next thing says it's the mayor's report, so I just went and got, you pass those down, there's seven there, I think I got seven there. Passed that down. So everybody in the council will have a bag, so you'll know what people are talking about. I've had the opportunity to be here every day this week, just things were going on that I, and I will tell you that I have not ever, when I go outside, I'm a moving target by people who, we've got enough for everybody in each direction. I've had more people ask me about these bags and how they can get them, you know, "How much are they?" And I say, "They're free." And we're paying for them with the dime we, we've already got people paid for. So this is quite a community conversation piece, and I thought each member of the council should at least have one. And if you need another one, you can probably come down and talk Elise in the reception counter in there to give you one, because she's the one that handles the distribution pretty much with no questions asked, because if people know about it, they're, it's been exciting to me to see specifically the number of older senior citizen types that come in and want this bag. And they specifically have made two things. Number one, it's a well-built bag, but they like these grips on it, that they say they can then go to the store and put the milk bottle or some heavy something in there, and they don't have to worry about it, the bag tearing on them or the plastic breaking or whatever have you. So we may be on to something. I've already had one call from another mayor wanting to know about this, how did we do it and whatever. So I'm thinking we're probably going to have ourselves some publicity of a favorable mention about this by what's going on here. So I just wanted you all to know, that's the kind of the hot thing at the city right now is the bag. And so I think it's an interesting move for the environmental world to understand it, and they do, and they're promoting it, too. So I'm feeling good about that we've done something here that a lot of people have a lot to think good things about. The other thing I just wanted to share with all of you is, is that I had a meeting with Scott Buneen earlier today, and we were talking about things that are happening that are impacting Batavia. And I've got him putting together some numbers for me about all the new things that seem to be happening. We're having a lot of new houses built. But the more interesting thing, and it's out, but it isn't really out to public or any great, is that immediately west of Batavia, about at the intersection of Main Street and Nelson's Lake Road, the Kane County Forest Preserve is buying all the farms, seems to be at least. And they've now assembled, what I am told is over 1,600 acres, has now been caught. And when they put it all together out there, it's there now, but it hasn't been developed and refined in a forest preserve territory yet. But when that's all put together, that will comprise what I am told, and they're still buying, they just bought the Jungles Farm, which was 331 acres north of Main Street at Wethameth Road there. That was between Mill Creek Subdivision and Met Wethameth Road out there. Right now, they've, they've acquired over 1,600 acres. And that, I believe, is the large, already is the largest forest preserve holding in Kane County. So we're going to have this. Now, you have to appreciate, we don't know what it's going to be, but all those 1,600 acres apparently will never have a house built on them. There won't be any kids coming out of them, but also, there won't be any taxes coming out of it. It's all going to be off the tax rolls. So one of the things, when we got into the Plan Commission meeting a while, a couple of weeks ago over Ashton Ridge, there were some people who thought we were doing a negative thing to the school district. And I pointed out to them, I said, "As far as I can see, we're doing a positive thing to the school district, because this will give them some kids that they wouldn't be getting otherwise with all that that's now been taken off of the development rolls for Batavia." So the staff is preparing for me a map that'll show all of you. I think I distributed to you at last meeting of what it all looks like, but this is a kind of a dynamic moment in Batavia's history, that all this is kind of all coming together at this point in time, and we're going to have all this coming down on us. And, you know, you can't say a forest preserve is a negative thing, but I've had people tell me, "Well, do you realize that's only 2.7 miles away from a full tollway interchange at Orchard and I-88 is where it starts?" So, you know, I think some people are thinking, "Well, now's time for the, somebody want to build a big stadium out there or something on part of it, because you're going to have all this access to toll road and a bunch of other stuff." I don't know if they will or not, but a lot of dreamers out there, but we'll see. But this is a moment that, and, you know, we don't really have to, we don't get to vote on any of it. It's, the one that seems to have had the biggest impact on is probably the school district, because they're the ones that aren't going to get the kids or the tax money off the property. And a lot of it is in the Batavia School District, not all of it, but a lot of it is. So we'll just have to wait and see. But I suggested to Scott that maybe in a few months, once we get it all together, we should probably have a committee, one of our committee of the whole meetings, we should have the staff come in and put on a more detailed presentation to all the aldermen, so you understand what is in and what isn't and where this could go. And I want to have some more opportunity to talk with the Kane County Forest Reserve folks a little bit further as to how big they really think this thing is going to become, and are they still going after more and more property? And then also, you know, what impacts this has on us as far as, you know, expanding our utility systems and everything else that may happen there. So, and then I think both the Plan Commission, we should have another session with them and just have them get to know what's really happening, because, you know, when you consider that we got this on the west side of Batavia, and then on the east side of Batavia, we got Fermilab, their 6,800 acres is now being repurposed and redeveloped. And so they tell us they're going to bring 2,200 more jobs in there when this thing, the new accelerator is done. That's another big, big thing that's happening. So we got more things happening here than probably anybody else in the region at the moment of all the stuff that's really going on. And it's going to have a long-term impact on Batavia. And I remember in 1968, 69, I was a newspaper reporter for the old Batavia Herald newspaper, and I had to go to the meetings with the city council and county board when this thing called, they called it Weston to begin with, because there used to be a subdivision out on Fermilab called Weston. And then they changed the name to the NAL, National Accelerator Laboratory, and the Fermi thing didn't come for many years later. But we used to go to that, and there was all kinds of things being discussed, and there was crowds of people at the meeting, and people would say, "Is this thing ever going to smoke, smell, pollute, turn on bright lights, make noise, or generate traffic?" And I now have a quote of myself in this, many years ago, in the Sun Times, they did a little story about it, that they asked me, as then the mayor, what was my reaction to Fermilab? And I said, "Well, it's been good. It doesn't smoke, smell, pollute, turn on bright lights, make noise, or generate a lot of traffic." And I think that's proven to be true. And, you know, somebody said, "Well, if you were, could go back to 1966, when Lyndon Johnson announced this at the White House, should, would you be applauding or would you be booing if you could do it over again?" I said, "I would applaud because of what it's really done. Can you imagine what Batavia would be like today had that not happened? And that whole area out there, east of Kirk Road, would just be, I can tell you, it would be just one mass of urbanization out there, and it would, a lot of it wouldn't be Batavia, Roar would have annexed in, Naperville would have annexed in, Warrenville, West Chicago. We would all have had a chunk of it, and then there would have been some, I'm sure, conflicts between home developers about how low will you make the density or high you make the density so I can build a lot of houses here." So I don't know what it would be. You know, we think we have a traffic problem on Wilson Street at some points today. Imagine what it'd been like if you had 40,000 people living out there on the Fermilab piece, which is probably about what it would hold if, if you could turn it all into housing. So we've had some interesting moments here, then it seems like if you look at what happened and how the city of Batavia handled it, and, you know, we agreed to supply it with water, and then we supplied it with sewer. And so we just had a discussion about how we're way ahead of the game on the sewer plant, but I would suggest us having that connection to Fermilab certainly doesn't hurt us at all in getting federal money, as in also with the water. So I, there's a lot to be said for the advantages to this thing, and as I say, it doesn't smoke, smell, pollute, make noise, or turn on, or make, bring a lot of traffic.